Okay, good evening. This is Mary Kay Decorse, Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees, and I'm calling the reorganization meeting to order at 6:35 PM on Wednesday, May 29, 2024. This is an open meeting of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. It is being recorded at the Auburn Public Library Merriam Room. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Vision. Is anyone recording in this meeting? Anyone else recording? Okay, thank you. The agenda for this meeting was posted at the Auburn Town website on Friday, May 24, 2024. The first item on the agenda is reorganization. Do I have a nomination for Chair?
I would nominate Mary Decorse for Chair.
I second.
Any other nominations? Any other, any nominations for, any other for Chair? Okay. Vice Chair, do I have nomination for Vice Chair?
Do we have to vote on that first one?
Do we? Can we do that without?
Yeah, we're quorum.
Yeah, we're quorum.
Okay, all right, let's do it. All right, can I have a vote on the motion for, vote on Mary Decorse for the Chair? I'll do a, do a roll call. Matt Toth?
Yes.
Erica, absent. Vera Corain?
Yes.
Lindsay Baker?
Yes.
Mary Kay, I'll, I'll agree. Do I have a, and so that's, that's affirmative?
Mary is Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a, can I have a nomination for Vice Chair?
Nominate Vera.
I would second that.
Thank you.
Any other nominations? Okay, can we have a vote for Vera for Vice Chair? Matt Toth?
Yes.
Erica Briesacher, absent. Vera Corain? Lindsay Baker?
Yes.
And yes, I am supportive of that. The next item, the next nomination is for Clerk. Do I have a nomination for Clerk? Going once, going twice?
We nominate Erica.
Very often, the, the junior person sort of gets the nomination for Clerk.
Are you going there?
I will politely decline because I am already clerking a different committee in town. It's a lot of work.
Well, then at least on a temporary basis, I'll nominate Erica.
Okay, do I have a second for Erica?
I second.
And, all right, we'll do a roll. Matt Toth?
Yes.
Erica, absent for Erica. Vera Corain?
Yes.
Lindsay Baker?
Yes.
And I will support that as well. We have another item that, which is something that we discontinued at one point, but it's interesting bringing it back. Do we have a vote for Treasurer?
I nominate Lindsay.
Okay. Do I have another, another nomination or another vote for Lindsay?
Or a second?
A second?
I will second, throw my hat in the ring for Treasurer.
Okay. All right. So I will go back. Matt Toth?
Yes.
Erica Briesacher, absent. Vera?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And I will support that as well. So should we, should we nominate? Oh, we did nominate Erica. Okay. So the first, going back to the, the beginning of the agenda, I will ask to, to confirm that members of the body that are anticipated to be on the agenda tonight are present. Matt Toth?
Yes.
Erica Briesacher, absent. Vera Corain?
Yes.
Lindsay Baker?
Yep.
I am here. Mary Decorse, Town employees participating. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jean Collins?
Present.
Very good. And the first item on the agenda that we have is public comment. Do we have public comment from anybody in the room? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I heard, I'm sorry that you had public comments, so I just had to come on down and say something.
Great.
I'm a great believer in open, transparent government, and the Auburn Housing Authority has got two public comment sessions with Board of Selectmen. Thanks to Selectmen Corain, brought back a second commenting period, so I'm glad that you batted that. A lot of the boards do not have that, unfortunately. What I wanted to say tonight was I had some difficulties reserving the Merriam Room, the rooms, for a meeting with a political party. And the problem that I ran into was the, it was checked, the calendar was checked, and the room was not reserved. But then I was contacted and told that there was somebody in the room, but through a little negotiation with the library director, we finally got the room. So I, my question of course was, what's the calendar for? Because it's reported. And then we came back, I came back recently and tried to get the smaller room and try to reserve it. And I came back like two and a half weeks before we needed it because I thought maybe the policy was the same as the Merriam Room. But the, I guess the history room? I was told, I think I understand what he said was, that you can't reserve it till two weeks out, you have to wait a week, a week before, before you can reserve it. I wasn't sure what the logic went behind that quite frankly. So all I would ask is that, right now, the CWA has no rooms that organizations can use for whatever reason. And so a lot of organizations and people are trying to find places so that they can communicate with each other and discuss some important topics. I've always felt that libraries, you're supposed to be the center of intellectual discussion. And so it's fitting that we use this location to do that. And all roads lead to Auburn, so it's a great location to meet people. So if there could be some adjustment to the policy or some clarification, so who can suggest about? Some of the other towns, like Milbury, if you go to Milbury, you walk right in, they have a policy two weeks, but they give it to you if it hasn't been reserved. And the person at the desk does it, that your rep doesn't have to do it personally. It was so much easier. It was wonderful. So that, that's my recommendation. And then finally, when I tried to contact the board, I scoured the library site online load to find out how do I contact the Library Board of Trustees? And only the very bottom of the webpage was an email apparently linked to the director. And I didn't want to contact the director, I wanted to talk to the Library Board of Trustees. So perhaps that could be corrected, so there'd be more direct communication from the public.
Absolutely.
But other than that, congratulations on your reelection. And congratulations on Todd Corain being the Manager of the Year.
Thank you.
So to, to toy you are, are great spring horses for the top of Auburn. That's all I got.
Thank you, Alan. Does anybody else have any comment?
Mary?
Yes.
I think it's probably good for us to take a look at that. There's a whole bunch of policies that need to look at, but maybe the Merriam Room policy we ought to take a look at again.
Both policies, actually. What the policies are for anybody in the community to book either the three room or the Merriam Room, so that everybody knows what the process is.
Yeah.
Because you're right, that should be easy. And I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, really do. So if I could just weigh in a little bit here?
Please.
You're right, I did, I did sort of move some things around to, to be able to accommodate you. This room is used very heavily all day, every day, for a number of different things. So they're not all pulled on the calendar. A lot of times, it's internal use. This is the only room we have, except for the smaller history room. So I did accommodate you, just because I always try to do that for everybody if I can. And I was able to kind of move somebody else who were, you know, they were willing to be flexible. So we do that for everybody if we can, but this room is the only one. I know other libraries are bigger and they have, they have more space. We just don't have that much. For the smaller room, it's, it works well so that we can accommodate people who, who walk in. And it's used very heavily as well, so we can certainly look at them, but just, you know, I appreciate you recognizing that we did, you know, we did accommodate you. Also, I think you probably logged in on the couple of days where we transferred everything to a different server, and we lost a couple of things because that link had been there. And when we transferred over to the server, everything was, you know, kind of missed, you know, messed up a little bit, and a couple of things were missing. So we did put that back on right away, so this we found out. So, thank you.
Can I get clarification on two points? What is this room heavily used for? Since there aren't classes or anything all day long, I'm just curious.
This is, meeting rooms for us, it's prep, prep room. A lot of programs take place in here. Storage room, especially if we have to do things, we have, we have no space to move things, racks and things, and we move them in here. So we also have to go back and forth here a lot, because circ desk is out there and our, you know, desks are out there. So it really is used extensively. And then we don't want to have it so booked up that if somebody wants, you know, needs it, then it becomes impossible to, to juggle things around, so.
Okay, and the second point was, so this room is heavily used and hard to book, but the other room, you can't book in advance because you want it for walk-ins, right?
No, no, you can, you can book it up to seven days.
Okay.
Yeah. So that accommodates, or walk-in. If people walk in and it's available, then, then that, and that works out well for a lot of people. We want to try to balance, you know, the resource for as many people as we can.
So a request for two weeks ahead of time would do what to the use of that room?
A lot of times, people just forget, and then we've got the, you know, the placed holdings up there, and they forget, and they don't come, and then so we're holding. The, the one week is really not, I know that it's not 100%, you know, the right ideal, but that's worked quite well for a lot of people. One, you know, up to two weeks, people, it's the same with programs. We don't, we don't promote programs too early, people forget. So that works a lot better in terms of, you know, people showing up, or they remember to call if they're not coming, and then we can take that down and, and reserve it for somebody else, too. So the seven days works well.
And how much lead time do you need for the Merriam Room? Just for anyone who might need a larger space?
I'm pretty flexible with, it's, it's not really a rigid timeframe, they just do have to fill out the form and some things that I have to, you know, to look at. So if it's available, you know, I don't hold to a rigid, you know, one or two weeks. If it's available and they want it in two days or something, and I can make that happen, I will.
Okay.
Any other public comments? Okay, so we will go to the next item on the agenda, which is, I provided everybody with the direct, the library director's goals that we as a committee are. Before I did move on, I just want to welcome you, Erica. We nominated, what is that expression that you?
We all told, we volunteered.
We volunteered you that you're, you're the clerk.
That's what I saw. Thank you. That's, that's the tax for being late and thinking today was Tuesday. It's fine.
We're not going to tell you who did that.
That's fine. This is how I've ended up in a lot of roles, so it's okay.
So we'll move to item number four. We as a committee, our function is to make recommendations to the Town Manager regarding things related to the library. So one of the things that we talked about in a previous meeting was recommendations to, for the library director's goals. Again, the Town Manager is the individual who makes the final decision, but we wanted to be able to have input.
If I, if I may make a comment, I actually think we're the ones who set the goals.
That's right.
And then once we agree on the goals, we give them to the Town Manager.
That is correct.
I think he needs to, to approve them, because that falls under our purpose.
Correct, correct, correct. I think there was a little bit, there was a little bit of, there was a little bit of misinformation about that in the past.
Yeah.
So you're absolutely correct, that the role is to set the goals, and it is up to the Town Manager to enforce them. So yes, that is correct.
Could I?
Yes.
I, I have a little different set of, you asked me to send the goals to the?
To the Town Manager, yes.
I sent a set of those. This, it's a little different.
Okay.
Than what you've got here. Maybe the wording is the same, I don't know. Let's, could we start with number one?
Yeah, let's do that.
I don't know what that one is for you, but to hire a librarian, MSL, Commonwealth certified as the Deputy Director of the APL by September, and a children's librarian, MSL and Commonwealth certified as soon as funding is available. That's what I think we decided on last time, because I, I forget who had mentioned the concerns about funding, so that's, we put that in there, but indicated that the funding when it's available. Does that, is that?
Well, can we compare and just, and then discuss and then decide?
Yeah, in, in fairness to what Matt is saying, he's actually probably right, because we did have a discussion about this. I took notes, but I did not transfer them. So my version says achieve full, that was my bad. Achieve full staffing levels by December 31st, 2024, including hiring dual licensed librarians. So we had one of which should be a children's librarian once funding becomes available. I raised the budgeting issue because only 25,000 is allocated for a children's library, library person, and I don't know that we could get a licensed librarian for 25,000.
Okay.
Although maybe a part-time we can, I don't know.
We, those were really?
Maybe not.
Two different goals. The work with whatever resources available to return to full staffing level at the APL by December 31st, 2024. I got that from his, from Steve's material as well, is what we did last time when we talked about it together. So those were two that we had. And then another one that you had was to create a volunteer program for seniors, including but not limited to senior tax write-off participants, as well as teens.
Yep.
And that's, is that?
I combined the hiring into one, so that we could kind of fit a little bit more in. But yeah, so I have achieved, I achieved full staffing, or we can go with your version, however you want to do it, on number one, because we're after the same thing.
Yeah.
And create a volunteer program, exactly as you've stated, I had for number two.
Right.
Okay, so we're really combining number one, and we're putting that along with the children's librarian to work with whatever resources are available to return to full staffing level at the APL by December 31st, 2024.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Lindsay and Erica, do you have, is that consistent with what you have?
I have to go back.
Looking at my notes from last night.
You guys are smart, you bring like notebooks.
If I don't?
I bring loose leaf pages, this is my habit.
I'll never, ever keep track of them. I just have to, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, well, while people are looking for that, the statement about the volunteer program for seniors, is that, that, I thought that was one that we agreed on.
Yeah.
Okay. Then improve the aesthetic of the main library area with art, historic displays, study tables, new workbook displays, community bulletin boards, and comfortable reading chairs. That's one that we also agreed on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then establish a well-rounded periodical section for adult publications of interest to the community and for all other age groups. Is that consistent, or?
I, I actually tweaked that one. I changed the language, and you guys have it on your handout. So specifically, what I put in was return periodicals to their previous location and establish a robust periodical section of adult publications of interest to the community, with no fewer than 40 unique magazine offerings geared to adults by December 1st of 2024. And I would say that comes, that looking at our comparable communities, that still puts us with slightly fewer magazines than they offer to their communities, all of which have a strong community interest. And I feel like we let that slide, but there is a space. The space is still there, presently being used for CDs. I think it would be easy to make the swap, put the rack back in, and reestablish a periodical section, because currently, we don't have one, and that is actually in violation of our collections policy, which explicitly states that there should be a periodical section. So I went with that level of specificity to ensure that we got a full periodical section for the community, as opposed to just, you know, like six or eight magazines.
Is that acceptable? Okay.
Yeah, I think so. And on the, the first one around staffing, I had basically just noted that Vera's had sort of tried to consolidate the two from yours, Matt, into one that was a little broader, just to accommodate budget. That, that was my note that I had taken, but I think it was unresolved, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I had no date listed. I just had pretty much the same thing you said.
Okay.
You and I can just make sure we've got that language?
All right.
Together, okay.
Yeah.
Then we had a sixth one, offer technology classes, another young adult, and adult programs, at least 30, with measurable outcomes, aside from the craft offerings, by April 30th. This really gets at something that you've got here about adult programming.
Yeah.
But maybe it's said in a way that you want to change what we have here, and?
I, I have three options, right? We have five goals, although, all things considered, and in an effort to reestablish adult resources at this library, where they seem to have just kind of slid, slid to the side, I, I have three choices, if we like more than one of them. Oh, no, we haven't.
You get it?
Landed on my feet.
Okay.
My clumsiness is, you know, strategic. All right, so, so of my three choices, I have, one, create an adult library of things with items of interest, two, the adult and possibly teen community of Auburn, two, and this is, this is what we're talking about, Matt, expand the Auburn Public Library's programming geared to adults, separate of family or all ages activities. Activities can include crafts, lectures, book clubs, technology classes, et cetera, all geared to ages 13 plus. And I think that's important, because a lot of what we call adult programming is really all ages programming, but I know that there are adults in, in the community that are too young for the senior center, but also want their own thing as a community resource. And my third one was restore the Auburn Public Library physical collection offerings for adults and teens to a ratio of 70/30 on the shelves, with 70% being materials and 30% being empty space, which I believe is a standard. Without removing any additional shelving, adult book shelves should be well stocked with materials of interest to adults. I thought those were our top three. I am obviously happy with any of them, so you guys pick.
Well?
What would you say is like a timeline for a timeframe for these? Because I, I do think that there's, there might need to be different, right? The timeframes are, would be different depending on which we choose. I feel like number two is where we kind of keep circling as a group around having more adult, adult-specific programming. And I think I don't know enough about what, what the current ratio is based on the weeding, and so I would maybe see if Jean could expand on the, like, what the current, you know, ratio of stock is, if, if you have those figures to, to kind of enlighten us, because I, I know it looks sparse, but I also know there's a weeding process, and there's been something moving, so just for fairness and transparency, I wanted to ask that question before maybe committing to any of those three. See, maybe we could start there with the, the 70/30 ratio.
So you're looking for a ratio of 70/30 for adults and teens. Where do, where do children fit in? I'm not sure where you're.
Well, you seem to have children pretty well covered. Where I see them on?
I'm looking just for this. So?
Yeah.
As I mentioned a few times, we are in the process of major weeding and inventory. And so of course, the shelves are empty, because a lot of them are back here. We've got a couple of thousand books waiting to come back here. We can't move them out here until we've gone through the inventory, see what's missing, see what we need to pull, see what's duplicates, and all those other things. Otherwise, we're going to be shifting everything twice. So we're still in, in the process of that. It's still going to take a while. It's a massive 40,000-plus books that we're moving around and shifting. So that's why some of them, of course, they're not going to stay empty. In fact, we actually have to pare down and see, you know, we look at age of collection, we look at circulation history and so forth, we look at duplicates, and so we're looking at all that. Before I came here, there had never been an inventory project, or a weeding one that was, you know, organized in that way. So we did a lot of it during the pandemic, but we're still working on that. So certainly, that would certainly be the right ratio that we'll get there. We're not there right now, because we're still in the process of moving them around. It takes a long time.
How long have we been below the 70/30 ratio?
I don't think we are.
I mean, on the shelves?
Maybe a month? Not, not that long. We've been shifting things around, don't forget. So things that were in one place are, you know, having another place.
Right. My concern is even when we get comments from constituents, we get comments on how sparse the library is, how people are unable to get what they want, or they have to order it from somewhere else, and compared to other libraries who are very well-stocked. But if that's something that we want to loop back around to, say, next year, we can absolutely do that. We can focus on adult programming to ensure that we grow the, the programming that appeals to ages 13 plus, not all ages, not family, like dedicated adult and teen. What I've noticed on other libraries is 13 and adult frequently overlap, and the commonality is usually 13 plus, because kids inclined to do library programming, or kids who will mix well with adults. So I think that that's fair. Like, by kids, I mean 13 plus.
Does anybody have any? I'm sorry?
Would you repeat that line in there about the 70/30? What is it?
Oh, what I?
Yeah.
Put on the reading glasses, okay. What I had was restore the Auburn Public Library physical collection offerings to adults and teens to a ratio of 70/30 on the shelves, without removing any additional shelving. Adult book shelves should be well stocked with materials of interest to adults. Because again, I, I am concerned about all the empty shelves, all of the material that we seem to not have relative to our other comparable libraries when it comes to adults. The reason I don't focus on kids is because I know the kids section is well-stocked. There's been a lot of focus on kids, but the, the adult programming, materials, periodicals, the whole nine yards that has shifted to the wayside. And I think that there is a desire in the community to get that back. And I think as a ward?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
So you have to consider this reciprocity. It's not intended that any library will have, you know, all the books. And in, in addition, our ebook leadership and books on CD, which we have, and a lot of libraries do not have them anymore, or not very many. So the ebooks, people are, are reading a lot more ebooks, so resources have to go to ebooks as well. So we look at it, we're, we're pretty much the same as we've been for the last seven or eight years, with the number of books we loan out about this thing as the ones that come in. So it's actually a good balance. So it's not intended that any library will have all the books. We actually do pretty well for, you know, for, for requests.
No, this, this is true, but we're well behind our comparable libraries. And by which comparable, I mean almost identical demographics, almost identical population. Budgets that are smaller than ours, but they have more than we do. And that's my concern, is that there is a thirst in the Auburn community to have a real library, because these guys are going to our comparable communities, even ones that are not one town over. They're going to these other libraries, because they aren't getting their needs met here. And I feel it's in the interest of the community to, to reestablish that. Do people use ebooks? Sure. But you can get ebooks anywhere, and of course, the library is a resource. I think that that, the people of Auburn should be able to go to their local library and get their hands on the material they're looking for when they come in. And I think the budget is there for that, there, because again, we're, our, our, our budget is easily comparable, if not more robust, than these other libraries, who seem much more well-stocked than we are. We do outdo them on museum passes. And those are, are great, but I am concerned, like, not everybody likes to do e-reading. We should remain a resource for those that, that want to put their hands on material and?
Have it in front of them.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's exactly why we've done this really in-depth reading, so that we can keep the collection more robust. Those shelves are not going to stay empty for very much longer. We continue to work on that on a regular basis. Those shelves are not going to be empty. It's because we're still shifting everything around. You don't shift everything and then add things, and then shift them and take them out again. There's a process to it.
Okay, do you have a timeline for that?
I'm hoping within a month, we've got people on, I was just on vacation. It's a process that has many steps. You also have to do a lot of things in the, in the catalog to catch up with everything. And if you're pulling something off the shelf, you need to see if there's a newer edition you want to get, or you're not going to get those at all, or you look to see how many books you have on one author. We look for circulation histories on those to see how many go out a lot. So there's, there's a lot to it. I think that I had written up something that a whole page before, before of our process for reading. We also have, we can only take so much off the shelf because then we have to put them on book trucks and we don't have enough book trucks. We can't get more book trucks because we have no place to put them. So it's always this rolling sort of process that we have to keep up on both ends with. So those those shelves are certainly not going to be empty. I don't like to put things on the top shelf because people can't really reach them or on the bottom shelf either, because then they're too low. So we have that sort of like, you know, that that issue to contend with as well.
As we read adult materials, are we replacing them so it's a one to one?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So the number will look stagnant, but it's not. It's dynamic because of course you're pulling books off and then you're putting new ones on. That's that's the whole purpose of what we're doing with the collection. And we provide books to a lot of people from area towns. And I know some Auburn people might go to other towns as well, but believe me, we provide a lot of books to people in other towns too. That's the beauty of a public library. People can go to different ones and they can return them at any library too. So that's, that's the, you know, benefit of the C W R S network.
For now, are you okay with not having this on the list or?
Yeah, we can table it to next year if we're if we have.
Or September, if it's supposed to be a month from now, I guess you could take a look at it in September, actually, right?
Well, true, yeah. I mean, the, the, we, we want to do the programming, right?
Right.
That's on your list, that's on my list.
Yep.
I think we all agree. I definitely want to get the, obviously, you guys on the periodicals. And I don't know if we want to add library of things or leave it as this.
I was gonna, I was just gonna ask that because I'm such a fan of the whole concept. And I just recently visited Webster Library and they have a bouncy house that you can rent for your library card. They have stir masters, they have all kinds of things that would be very costly if you had to purchase that, power washers, things like that. So I'm passionate about that just because people don't need to spend money just to do something every once in a while. And I would love to see if there was a way that the board could incorporate that. It's not programming per se, but it would be a resource that's available to adults and possibly teens, as you say.
So we can do six goals. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm not, I'm paying attention to what you're saying, but I've got my mind trying to figure out this adult programming.
Yep.
If we put number two that Vera has and number six, that's the offer tech now. Do we have interest in offering technology classes as a regular class where they can sign up for those kinds of things? Do we have some interest in suggesting that that happen?
I have, we have gotten feedback on Facebook that people want some craft classes, like they missed some craft classes that Bemis used to do. And somebody asked for a maker's room, which I had to look up what that was. And that's a little bit more geared to hands-on and definitely book clubs. I don't know if there's technology classes. Erica?
Yeah, I mean, my question is, what do you mean by technology classes? Because that can range from learning how to use Excel all the way to, you know, turn on the computer.
Right.
That's right.
Which is, which is sort of where I have to start sometimes. But I mean, it's such a wide range of what do we mean by technology classes?
Technology could be any of, whether it's your iPhone, your iPad, or your computer.
Right.
Or Android for those of us.
The Android, that's right, same, yeah, smartphone.
Google technology.
Yeah. And to be able to have some opportunity.
Pardon? How many have using your iPhone?
So that you'd have some of those kinds of classes. And then if we ever get this maker business started or something like that, those are all possibilities, but we have nothing now. We have individual support that's very thoughtful support, but it's not, it's not the same as being able to sign up for a class. And I don't know of these libraries, I don't think there's any of them that don't offer at least some basic things, whether it's iPad or the smartphone, or whether it's the computer where you're in a class so that you're not doing individual work, but you've got a small class. If that, if we find that that is of no interest in this community, that's a different story. But at least we ought to try to do what a lot of other libraries do. So that's.
That's true.
So it's a broad range of.
Absolutely. It was just more of a clarification question.
What a good question.
So, you know, I'd offer that and, you know, the technology classes and other young adult programs, at least thirty, with measurable outcomes. So we know what we're looking for in these things, you know, small goals.
Like cracking attendance, like what classes did you hold each month? How many people attended?
Yeah. Well, more than that, to what extent they would have met. If you have a class, you've got at least two or three goals. If you're going to teach a course in using your iPad, there are some goals that you would have in being able to do that.
Okay.
And what you want to do is to measure whether you've achieved those goals or not. So it's more than just a demographic.
Okay.
We call that learning targets in K through twelve. In other words, what's the goal of the lesson? Was the person who accessed the lesson able to to complete or be able to be successful at that? So that's a good point, though. So if, so let's just say, let's use an example, and maybe I'm going the wrong way on this, but let's say when I stepped out of technology for a little bit when I worked in private school because the kids were not allowed to access technology because they had been unsafe. And I'll just leave that very vague. When I came back in, it was only three years that I wasn't really heavily, you know, using technology. Google just blew up, Google Forms and Google Gmail. And I just literally had to back it up. And I had, I got tutored a little bit by my peers, but I really needed some guidance because things like Google Slides, Google Form, like it's so, it's something that that an objective could be, you're going to learn how to use a Google Slide, how to, you know, whatever the, edit them, be able to import pictures to them. The goal could be that those would be the three skills that you would gain in that class. Is that what you're saying, Matt? Okay.
And I, and I excluded the craft offerings from those because if you're making a flower pot, then you're making a flower pot, you did or you didn't.
Yeah, right.
So it's, that's why I excluded those.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fair. I was thinking, because I'm looking at the activities offered by, say, by other area libraries, because I can't come up with this stuff by myself. You know, I saw things, how to, how to make a sketchbook, right? Like basic stuff or lectures on cool things or cookbook clubs or how to make butter, how to make garlic butter. And I think that there's an interest for all of that, right? And we can definitely query the community to find out what exactly they want. Those are valuable. I don't know that outcomes are measurable, but I would want to keep books, would want to keep technology and all the other offerings because, I mean, because we should, right? Different people are going to come for different things. And book clubs do count.
Yeah. You had last time, just instead of just saying technology classes, increase adult programming, and we can say technology classes, reading groups, workshops, similar to that offered for younger patrons.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, then with the measurable outcomes. Is that acceptable to people?
Yeah, I think what you wrote, Vera, in the, the choices in the new document you shared, number two of expanding programming, separate a family or all ages activities, and then the activities including crafts, lectures, book clubs, technology classes, et cetera, geared to ages thirteen plus, I thought that that was good.
I agree.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think outcomes, depending on the type, right? I think that that would be for, sometimes it may just be attendance and like, you know, enjoyment, like, like we did the thing, I learned the thing, I got it. Versus like maybe with something where it is a class or a more structured event, then maybe there's one or two questions that follow that say, were you able to, you know, do the thing you came hoping to learn, right? So, yeah, I understand your point on measurable and, yeah.
Yeah.
It could be subjective that way, though, if a person felt that they gained that, gained what they came for, right? In other words, if that was a questionnaire.
Right, just a short, yeah, something like that that could then be reported out. Depending on the category of class.
When Steve was suggesting last time that we consider through the cultural council some kind of concerts here, that's true. You know, you're happy that you attended or you weren't.
Right. Maybe, you know, or maybe you learned something about a style of music.
Sure.
Right, so I think there's creative ways to come up with those, but sure, simple.
That's right.
Pulse, pulse survey right at the end, did you learn what you came for?
Because educational classes that aren't necessarily limited to technology, a couple of years ago, there was discussion on Facebook groups about wanting finance-based classes for, you know, the kind of people who post on Facebook, how come nobody taught me to balance a checkbook? How come nobody taught me to budget? Like, so we had that kind of adult interest. That's something that that we would offer. Just thinking of something else and now I'm drawing the total blank, but it was along those lines, you know, so that, so whatever flavor of educational thing we're teaching.
So we've got that. The last one had to do with the monthly order trustees meeting, the directors' report, and when those should be available. Now, my understanding is that that always required at least forty-eight hours. But I, I think, like the monthly directors' report, if we, if we're not able to have at least a couple of days to read that material, then we sit here and have something read to us. And I'm not big on that. I'd rather read it myself, and then if I have any questions, I'm, you know, I think it's a great opportunity to ask questions about it, but we ought to be able to read that material on our own. And I, so we have, they're available on Monday at noon. And then if it's, if the library's closed on Monday, we ought to have it on Friday afternoon.
Yeah, was it exceptionally helpful to get it a little bit earlier?
Yeah.
Look everything over so that we could come prepared.
And there were three other provisions in that. A completed database assessment of at least one program each week, identifying the goals of the program, and the assessment of the measurable outcomes. It's not onerous to do something like that. It's just like you said, Lindsay, it's short and sweet. You can have a nice QR code on something like that that they don't have to answer right then and there, but they can at least take a picture of it and then answer it when they're ready. And then provide monthly database measurement or assessments of the outcomes of at least one of the APL strategic plan goals. And then the other one was provide monthly updates on the work. Not that something is already completed, but what, what's the activity that's related to being able to do another one of the APL strategic goals? So it's, it's just to keep the focus on the strategic plan because we're going to have to start thinking about that all over.
Next. Yeah.
Is it okay? Excuse me. Is it all right if Vera and I, because this, we've kind of just finished these out and then have the approval of the board to be able to send those to the town manager? Is that, the two of us would just clean up the language in a couple of these? And then, we can't vote on it, we can't do anything. If we don't, if you don't give us the ability to do that, then we have to come back for another meeting because we can't send the material out and then have any response to it because that gets open meeting violation.
Correct.
But you, you can accept whatever subcommittee on that. Yeah.
Vera?
I have an idea. Well, I have a question. First, we turn this over to the board and to Jean. With regard to the reporting things, like getting material out earlier and reporting on all the stuff you wrote there that I can't remember because it's not in front of me and I don't have my glasses.
Right.
Can we just agree to have that as a reporting standard? Or do we want to put it in a goal? Like Jean, would you be okay incorporating that into a reporting standard without putting it into the goals? Or do you want us to add it?
Which one are you referring to? Sending them out? Because I haven't sending them out.
Yeah, no, the sending.
I was out of the country, so that's why this one is a little late, but.
We didn't get it in the last month either.
That part is good. But, okay, so sending it out like.
Forty-eight hours in, I guess, is what we talked about.
As soon as I see the agenda posted, then I send it out.
Okay.
So that's kind of.
So the sooner the agenda, the sooner we get your report.
Okay.
But the other stuff that you have in there, because I don't have your, you have it out in front of me. A completed, okay, so the three points that Matt is looking for is part of the director's report, completed database assessment of at least one program each week, identifying goals of the program and assessments of measurable outcomes, whether that is a technology class, a butter-making class, or any of the, any of the goals.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah. Provide monthly twelve database assessment of measurable outcomes from at least one of the APL strategic plan goals. So ever, so keep us posted on, on, on the process, on the progress of one of the.
Of the goals.
Of one of the goals, like since you're already working towards them. And provide monthly updates on work being done on at least one of the.
This is one that's already.
This is twice.
Done. No, this is done. This is done and this is doing.
Ah. So I guess, I guess, to go back to your question, Matt, I really feel like, I feel like in order for us to, to vote, we need to be able to be in agreement on what we're voting on. So I think we're looking at one document.
Here, let me give you this one for the last one.
Okay.
This, this was our September twenty.
Can we do that? Because I don't feel comfortable voting unless everybody can see and they're in agreement. And even if, sorry, Jean, here you go.
Thank you, thank you. So wait, wait, so the first thing is, for the reporting, for the directors, for. Goals. The first question is, really, do we want to put it as our goals for the library director document? Or do we want to just come to an agreement that these things will be included in the director's report and leave the goals separate? That can be two separate issues, and that's okay if Jean is on board and we're, and we're on board, right? And we can clarify, we can work out the language then to say, like, here's actually what we mean by that. Like, tell us about work you did on a strategic plan goal or work you're doing and/or work you're doing so that all of our needs are being met. And then separately of that, look at goals, or do we feel it's important to include the reporting metric?
I would say that, so I think I, I'm also getting a little confused because we had talked at the, well, we didn't get a chance to talk at the last meeting about, you know, some of the prompts for reporting on the strategic plan that we had worked on with Steve in a subcommittee. And so I think we still haven't circled back to those. And I think we had also started to dance around the idea of having strategic plan reporting on a less frequent but more robust basis. So I, I think maybe we need to circle back on that in terms of reporting standard, just to clarify. And, and so I think, to me, I would lean toward not putting the reporting standards as a goal, but I mean, I think that the, the director's report is, I think, the timing of it seems like we're all on the same page. We agree of, you know, timed with the, timed with the agenda a couple of days in advance. So that one seems pretty straightforward. And then, you know, I, I think I just would, I, I question because we had also been talking about having separate strategic plan reporting, that would be a little more robust database, like, so I'm just not sure where that, I don't want to duplicate ever.
You know what? And you guys had already worked on that material.
Right.
So, and I, I don't really know the outcome of that. You're right.
We don't have one, we just kind of shared it.
But you had some ideas about that.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
I'm fine with this.
So.
We'll hold it.
I, I appreciated what they pulled together because it, it pulls from a whole lot of different things and so, like, you know, organize it down to, you know, doable components. And, and I appreciate the way I took that at the time as well. So, so I'm fine with that. I don't, I think I don't have an electronic copy, just.
Yeah, I, I need to circulate an electronic copy and I, we still need to agree on those because we didn't have a chance to review them enough. So maybe that's an action item for a next.
You know.
Can I just interrupt? I think what, I'm very linear, so like, I, I think what, what I'd be really pleased in order to be able to move this forward as the chair is if we could go through Vera's documents, Matt's documents, and yea or nay them. I don't mean vote, but I mean agree or not agree. And then we would be able to vote. Yes, go ahead. What were you going to say?
I was going to say, if we can get a vote on the goals so that we can move them along to, to the town manager so that he can report with them, I think that would be excellent. Because I think honestly, you and I are in agreement on our proposed goals, just a couple of the, the little bit of the wording, but.
Only wording is on that adult programming classes. And as far as I'm concerned, what you've got here, expand the APL's programming geared to adults, separate a family or all ages activities. Activities include crafts, lectures, book clubs, technology classes, et cetera, geared to age three. And the only thing, yeah, the only thing I would like to do is to say that there should be at least thirty of those with measurable outcomes, aside from the craft, craft offerings by the end of the, you know, April twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So that's, that's not, that's really taking what you've got here and everything. We've agreed on one, the combining of the first two items and then volunteer programs and aesthetic, we've done all that and the periodicals. So there, we're in good shape with that. And you know, I, I think, I think that's important enough with these, the material that you guys have done on tactics, that we ought to think about a July ninth meeting. It's a Wednesday after.
After.
Fourth of July.
So let me just synthesize for a second.
I mean, at least, because that is important, right?
Can I?
I want to just back up for one second. I just want to make sure that people feel comfortable. Like, my question would be, if we went through these and agree or disagree, if you want to ex out one, we ex out one, then, then I can move to vote on it.
Yes.
And then we'd be able to move forward. Because I was hoping that we would have that done by this meeting, so then, then we that done by this meeting, so then, then we could talk about what next steps are. So does, does the team, does, does the board, is the board comfortable or uncomfortable with any specific goals on these? Otherwise, we could vote on them.
Can I, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Question two shall now be phrased.
Yep.
And you all are welcome to tweak it, because question two is gonna end up being our fifth goal.
Okay.
Expand the APL's programming to at least thirty per year with measurable outcomes.
Okay.
You guys can add either where appropriate or for educational programs. I don't care which one we choose, but I wrote where appropriate, because I'm that kind of geek. Geared to adults, separate of family or all ages activities. Activities can include crafts, lectures, book clubs, technology classes, et cetera, all geared to ages thirteen plus.
Right.
So the only variable is, do we want measurable outcomes where appropriate or measurable outcomes for educational programs?
I think where appropriate.
Where appropriate.
Okay.
Always where appropriate.
What?
Always where appropriate, because that might change as.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we are in agreement in that goal five. So goal one, achieve full staffing level by December thirty-first?
No, that's not.
Nope? You're gonna use yours?
Well, I think that's what we were, we agreed to that last meeting. Hire a librarian, MSL Commonwealth certified, as deputy director of the APL by September one, and a children's librarian, MSL Commonwealth certified, as soon as funding is available, and period. Work with whatever resources available to return full staffing levels at the APL by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
I like it.
That's, that combines everything that you've had and what I've had, into one goal.
Do we agree?
Yep.
Just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Just to clarify, so that's by December thirty-first, so what it says in Vera's goal, but combining just sort of the when budget is available and.
That's for under the children's.
Children's licensed librarian, when budget available.
Okay.
Licensed deputy librarian and full staff by December thirty-first.
Okay.
He said it better than that, so.
So do we, do, are we in agreement for that one? Number one?
Yes.
Yes. And then, and which one are we going with, guys?
Create a volunteer program for seniors.
Vera's number two, okay.
Yeah, including but not limited to senior tax write-off participants as well as teens.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Now, which one of the number threes, being returning to periodicals, or which is?
Can I add that teens slash college students? Because I forgot, and I, I don't know who comes here for credit volunteer hours, but I didn't mean to leave anyone out.
Okay, young adults, we could say too. Okay.
College students, teens includes high school, so if you wanted to add the college, there might be somebody interested in library work that can do an internship even, who knows?
So we're in agreement on Matt's number one, Vera's number two, and next for number three?
Improve the aesthetic.
Of the main library area with art history displays, study tables, new book displays, local author displays, community bulletin boards, and reading chairs.
Comfortable readers.
Agree?
Comfortable reading chairs.
My, my question, my only question on two and three is timeline.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't put one, because these are goals for a, like, this is, this is for the year, and in a year we'll set new goals. So by definition.
We could do, we could set goals, though.
By the, I don't want to, I don't want to, like, say everything has to be by December thirty-first, because that's mean.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's a helpful clarification. I'm comfortable moving forward without putting specific dates certain, and I, I just wanted to make sure we understood the timeframe we were talking about.
Okay, because, yeah, there's a, there's a metric for measuring with, like, a mid-year check-in, so by definition, things should be done by the end of that.
Hmm.
And return periodicals to their previous location and establish a robust periodical section of adult publications of interest to the community with no fewer than forty unique magazine offerings geared to adults by December first, twenty-four.
Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Agreed.
Okay.
We are happy to help.
And then number five.
Because we're already getting Facebook feedback on what I want to see.
Yeah, exactly, well, they got a lot of feedback about, I asked a question on, on Facebook about periodicals, and I was very interested in people's answers, and they were very, very, very diverse. Something as, as specific as clean eating. Um, I know people talked about online, but they also talked about very specific magazines that I'd never heard of, but they would like access to them at their local library. So that was neat, and it encouraged me, because I think I'm going to use that a lot more for asking questions out to the community and getting feedback. Um, so number five, we are in agreement, yes, that number two that was offered, which is expand the APL's programming geared for adults, separate of family, separate of family of all, or all ages activities. Activities can include crafts, lectures, book clubs, technology classes, et cetera, all geared toward ages thirteen plus, and as far as assessing that, where it's appropriate.
Yeah, with the addition of the language, it's had thirty per year with measurable outcomes where appropriate.
Okay. And we're in agreement?
Yeah.
All right, are we ready to vote?
So would anyone like to hear my opinions?
Yes.
Yes, please, of course.
Okay, so we're on the same page with some of these, I'm happy to say. Um, especially, I, I did appreciate the suggestion about the Google classes. Um, and you're right, we do a lot of walk-in technology, because those people need real-time real help at that time.
Hmm.
And they really don't want to come back for a class, they need help then. And sometimes they're there for hours, and we go over ten or twenty minutes and help. That's really what they need. If they need more, we encourage them to make an appointment, and they come in, and then we can set aside the time they need. We need to know what device they're, they're looking for, sometimes they know what they need. Sometimes it takes a long time, sometimes a short amount of time, sometimes they need to come back. We always have to be very careful, too, that we don't actually do anything to their device. So there's certain ways and guidelines that we do that. But I do think, um, you know, we can certainly put it out there and see if there's interest in how to use Google Docs, because I don't use Google Docs, because it makes me crazy, to be honest with you. But I'm sure they're valuable, a lot of people use them. And so I, you know, talk to my technology administrator about that and just see if that's something I can do. And I think that would be the place to start, and see where that goes.
I would not want to limit that. I, I think we should.
No, but I think we could start there and see where that goes. We also have.
I mean, that's so specific. I was thinking about something more general with iPads and phones and things like that, being able to use those things, because that's, the Google.
And how to use apps.
Is very specific.
To do a class with phones, everybody has to have the exact same phone, they want the exact same thing.
Okay, do you do Android phones, or are you doing Apple phones?
Right.
Well, then we have to get phones.
Okay.
Anyway, I, I like the idea, I think maybe we could start with Google Docs, and see if anybody has any suggestions about what you think would be good to learn in a class like that, please let me know. Um, so my question about number three is, do you want to be involved in choosing chairs or the art? Because we talked about the art in the history room.
Yeah. Um, yes.
And do you want to contribute any funds? Because the chair is expensive.
The, in the last meeting, if I recall correctly, you said that, that there is art, there is a stash of art and decorations somewhere, so I think we start there.
Right.
Because that's budget neutral.
Right.
Um, and, and, yeah, we can totally have a subcommittee of people who are gonna, of us guys, who are interested in coming in and, like, taking some time, maybe this summer, looking at what's in there, what can go up before we allocate funds. Maybe what we have is great, that would be awesome. Maybe it's not enough, but let's figure it out first. Um, as to chairs, realistic, I mean, are we down with chairs? We are. When, when Mary and I met with Ed and Dory, we had talked about library space planners, because, you know, we know, we know it's a small footprint, we know it's a dated building, we know that options are limited, but we've seen what can be done with such a small space, right?
Right.
So before we allocate funds to chairs, let's see where, where that goes, because this could just be a greater wonderful thing.
Yeah, I think, too, that we might want to, we'll be having some more meetings about the sunroom, see where that's going before we allocate everything, because we want to see how that, that was really going to be the comfortable chair seating meeting place. Also a place to put local author materials, like that really opens up in magazine, rolling magazine racks and, you know, a bunch of things. So, so that was all, um, you know, that was kind of already in the queue. Maybe we can get a better idea in the next couple of months about when all of that might happen, because when that does happen, we need sort of a pathway to the entryway, so some of these things are gonna have to move as well. They'd probably be shifted into the other room, but just to spend a lot of time on a design when we're gonna have additional space and that kind of reduce. And I have actually looked into some of those, the, you know, the, the designs, just to, just to look to see what options are.
Yeah.
If you don't have a great space.
So we can.
Certainly it's not comfortable. I totally agree with that.
Yeah, we can start with the art, because we have it. If we decide there could be better art, then we go from there, right? The, the subcommittee can report back and say, no. But, or, or select the art, and then we can figure it out. My understanding is that the sunroom is possibly a few years out, so in the meantime, we work with what we got. Again, I am all good with comfy chairs. We.
We have to do something, you talk about the general aesthetic, and I guess.
Yeah.
We have to figure out some way to make it look like a joyful place that it ought to feel like, and I think that's important. You know.
Can I add one thing to what Vera said? We also got feedback from artists, local artists and photographers, that they would love to be able to utilize space to be able to, to, to display their art. And they felt that their, they felt that the, the walls here are pretty, you know, plain, and it would be a perfect opportunity to use that space. So again, it wouldn't be buying anything, it wouldn't be spending money, but rather allowing somebody, an audience, to be able to see, you know, to be able to advertise their work.
We've done that, we've had it.
Yeah, I remember you had a few years ago, yeah. Photography, I remember about five years ago in here.
We swapped them out.
You know, Mary, this might be a very good time to talk about the fact that what we really need, we were not involved in any of the decision-making about the expansion of that library. And I, I think we really, it's time to call in a library planner.
Yeah.
Someone who can really help us do something with this space.
Right, right.
It just.
Right.
Right now, there just isn't any.
Right. Vera brought that up to, to the town manager, that, and again, it's specifically to be able to assess the space, to look at the space, to kind of give a sort of an advisory about how to use that space.
See, I would hope that we wouldn't do anything right now without a library planner, even trying to figure out how to manage the space that's been taken up, and be able to use things for at least a couple of years before we ever get that expansion built. But I, I don't know whether we need to, that's for a conversation, you've said that you've talked to the town manager, I guess maybe that's a follow-up conversation with the town manager, about being able to find the resources, to be able to do the library planner, to be able to come in and have more than sort of, um, a few, uh, people coming in and just having ideas about it, but people who actually have great expertise in library planning.
Yes.
Coming in and doing it. That's what these other places have done, that you've gone to.
Right, exactly. And the idea is, we have such a small footprint, but it is possible to maximize it and make it aesthetically pleasing and make it comfortable.
Mm-hmm.
And that is a bigger project, so in the interim, we don't want to put it on pause and just stay in limbo, right? Let's use the art we have, or the art that local artists want to contribute.
Absolutely.
Or like, the plants, yay to the plant now there, you know, and attractive displays, or, you know, make seating comfortable, right? Like, right now, people are kind of clustered on top of each other, but if you're an introvert that hangs out in the library, this is gonna be a place that, that you wouldn't want to sit, because you're an introvert, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, so I'm just thinking, for the now, let's take what we've got, let's take what's in storage.
Agreed.
Let's make it pretty and comfortable to the best of our ability while we wait for the planner to come in and talk about what can be done. I think because, given where the budget is, it's just not realistic that we're gonna buy a new building, or that we're gonna, like, massively expand, so let's maximize what we got.
Okay. Did you have more, did you have more, I think you were on number three.
Well, I'm sort of jumping around.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't know if I'm looking at the same ones as everyone else.
Yeah.
Um, the library things is already a work in progress, that's been our goal for a couple of years, we're stepping that back up. It was a space consideration, we have no space to store everything. As we continue with the expansion, be able to move a lot of the things out there, and we have, I think you weren't here at the last meeting, but I read off the list of about twenty or thirty items that we already either have or we have in the process. None of them are huge, but we, although I did think a leaflet might be good, I don't know.
A leaflet would be awesome.
It'd be great.
So we're, I don't even think that you need to use that as a goal, because it's already our goal, and we're, we're well on our way with that.
Yeah.
And I think I added in one of my comments, the cataloger is gonna be meeting with somebody to learn how to catalog, because they're artifacts, it's not just a record that you pull down, because it's just different.
Right.
So we're, we're pretty, you know, we've been on board with that for, you know, a couple of years, the pandemic came along, everything sort of just stopped, but, and now it's really been a space thing, but we are actively working towards that.
You know, I, I, I'm not diminishing the value of, you had mentioned that, that backpack was a library of things.
No, it's, it's to hold the library of things.
But, but those were not things that they would take out of the library, that they would check out of the library, those were just children's things from their children's program.
No, no, no. The, the, the backpacks were purchased specifically for them to borrow the library of things and take them home in the backpack.
But were they returning those things to the library?
Yes.
For example.
It's a, you gotta put them in some sort of carry.
Yeah, but what, what things did they take out?
Like, what, yeah.
We haven't taken them out yet. We've got a lot of children's things, although what we.
Oh, I thought you said you'd been doing this for a couple of years.
Well, in the planning stage.
Okay.
We have, we have the backpacks, and we have a lot of the children's things that.
Yeah, I thought you were.
So we're just trying to ramp back up with it.
Okay.
The backpacks hold, and it doesn't have to be children's either, it could be just something, you know, that fits inside the backpack.
I just didn't think that we were really actually about, so it's still in the planning stages, and the planning was that children could, in those backpacks, take out things from the library. Besides books, what else would there be that they could, that they actually check out?
Um, there's a lot of 3D puzzles, all, you know, kind of learning things.
That they would take.
Things that they would take home. They will, they borrow it.
They borrow it, like you, like you borrow a book and bring it back within a certain time.
So the system exists already for dealing with things like that, that would, I thought there was some concern that, that would take too much effort and work to be able to check out library of things and to watch them. So there's some process in place already to, when it happens, to be able to do it.
Okay.
Well, that's very encouraging.
I mean, maybe we can brainstorm, I, so a library of things did not make it on as a goal.
No, it did.
That made it up as a proposed goal. That made it up as a, as a little tangential aside, maybe we can also come up with things that we see like best practices, like a label maker. A label maker is ridiculously expensive and you might only want to label like, you're a dork like me with those shelves in your refrigerator.
Really? Really?
To help other people organize. Yeah.
If anybody wants one of those, they buy and never use it again.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
So those things that are manageable sides also that we have to store. Yeah, we do have about thirty things on the list and some of them we've already purchased.
So I'm going to exercise my authority as the, as the chair. I want to give Jean, Jean the opportunity to comment on any other things and then we need to vote.
All right.
So Jean, I want, we, we kept you, we cut you off a couple of times, so I'm going to make sure that you have your, all the things that you'd like to share and then I want to move to vote.
So some of these I, I think that I need to speak with Ed about and I want to open a can of worms or anything, anything. So I think that I'll skip over a couple of them, but, and one of the, about the programming, I'll talk a little bit about that because that's definitely in the queue. And it has, it's related to the deputy director position. So when I go through that in my report, I'll, I'll add some information about that.
Great.
I don't want to open a can of worms for this and I'm not sure if we want to, we don't want to have a conversation, but the union will read us if you have a recruitment volunteer program.
Okay.
So.
I, I think.
That's the threat we've had now for about six years.
I'm going to stop just because we already talked to Ed and Dory about this, that, that would not happen because that, what we would be make sure that none of the activities that a volunteer was asked to do would be anything that would threaten the, the security of someone's job. So I just want to table that conversation because I really don't want to go there. I appreciate you bringing it up, but it's something that we already. Yeah, no, no, I, I want to, I want to move to vote if we could, just because these are things that I want to make sure it doesn't, we don't become contentious and then not get to, through the full, the full agenda. So Kent, are we prepared to vote on the goals to be, to be moved forward to the town manager?
Yes.
Yes, are we? So I'm going to say, who's, so Matt, can, can you vote?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's unanimous. We'll move those along and thank you so much. I'm sorry I'm pushy tonight, but I feel like that's something that we need to accomplish. And I wanted to give you time, Jean, again, I'm, I'm a very linear visual learner. So things that are read for me, I can't identify with it. I have to be able to see it in front of me. I do have the report, but can we be very, I don't know, salient points is the right thing? Or points or that you want to make about the director's goals and the library director report? Or if you want to let people ask you questions, how you want to move forward, but I just don't want it to be very lengthy.
Well, I definitely want to go through my report, making that I expend time writing it so that I can inform you so that when you are discussing things with, with people that you know.
Right.
How to, you know, address them.
I just want to, let me just clarify. I think if you are able to pick salient points and then we can have discussion, what I'm concerned about is to have it read is something that I just don't think is appropriate. We, we all had that in advance. So could, could you just bring up a few points that you want to bring forth? And if any members have any questions, can we go in that route because it shouldn't be a very lengthy section of the meeting? We did get it in advance, twenty-four hours in advance, so we've, we've gotten it.
I've read it.
So which way would you like to go?
My intention is to help you understand some things that you bring up so that you recognize where we're coming from specifically with programs and things. But I'll go through it as quickly as I can. Just under facilities, we did remove the, I don't know if you call them water, I always call them bubblers. Those, those are finally taken away. We had to get a, you know, plumber in and then we're going to be putting in some bottled water because they just weren't very sanitary. So that took us into that and fixed the leak in the children's room. I just already talked about the weeding and got some numbers in there. Position posting, so I'll give you an update about the process for that. So I posted the deputy director position on the NBLC website for six weeks. All the, all the applications came to me and I also, and then I forwarded them to Ed. After the six weeks, I looked through them all and I talked with five people. And from there, I narrowed down to three people and they all came in and I interviewed them. And then I provided Ed and Dory with my rankings so that they could come in and also interview with these people. So the three final candidates are very strong candidates, I'm very happy to say. We have not made an offer yet. It'll probably happen this week and then hopefully the person will start in July. So the intention of the deputy director position is, is really a one-time opportunity because that person will become the next director unless something really goes haywire. But that's the intention of this. So after that, that position goes away, that person would then hire an assistant director. And that would be in a more, because that assistant director would probably be in that position for hopefully several years. And the deputy director will become the director. So for this next year, that position is, it's not intended to be like project-based necessarily. That person will learn from the ground up everything that we do here so that an easy transition will happen when I step down. That's, that's the intention of that, so.
Are they coming with library experience already?
Oh, yes. I would not even consider anybody who didn't have library experience. Oh, I, I have no desire to train from that, that far down. So the three candidates are really good and I have, you know, really hoping we'll have somebody to start by July. So that sort of leads into where I'm going with programs. Essentially, I've been filling two full-time positions for a very long time. And this gives me an opportunity to have that person learn a lot of the administrative things and I'll focus more on more programs. Because we have wait lists for programs. The only way to get around that is to offer more programs so everybody isn't trying to get to the same ones. I will add though, we have had a lot of adult programs and if you want, I'll generate a list of them. There have been a lot of them. Yeah, I can certainly do that. I think you find them very, very interesting. So anyway, that sort of addresses that goal. That's one of my goals as well. And then, you know, when I step down, the deputy director will determine whether that person's going to, you know, shift toward the programming side or the administrative side. Nobody will have to work two jobs. It just sort of grew that way, certainly never intended. And I certainly hope not to do that for much longer, but anyways, it's been good. I, I do want to step more into the programming side and then we'll hopefully have a little bit more time. So anybody have any comments or just thoughts on that? I will send you an update about the, the new hire as soon as the person is actually hired. Just quickly, I'm still working on the library website. It's, it's kind of there. There is some content. I've got to write some more content and we've got to sort of still tweak a few things, but it's pretty good. I kept it pretty simple. A lot of libraries have lots of stuff on their web, on their page and I, we didn't want to do that. We need it to be more simple. So we're still working on that.
Two things on the library website. One, the museum passes are not connected to the library website, which.
They're right there. It says museum passes. It's an, it's an image. And it's also on custom contact. It's been there for years.
And yeah, because someone like me needs it really basic and easy to find where this stuff is.
When I'm finished, it's also going to be on a tab. So you'll actually be able to go right into the logo or you can go into the tab. But it's definitely there. We have hundreds and hundreds of hits on, on that website, so it's there.
Second thing, second thing, as I, as I look at our website versus other websites, I notice when we have, for example, Lego group building a truck and with a, with a link. And you click on it and it gives you a pop-up which says Lego group building a truck. As opposed to say other websites, which when you click the link will say Lego group building a truck ages six to eight, we will build a truck at blah, 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 time. Is it possible to put a little bit more description in there for people who might not have gotten the newsletter with the description, but are perusing the website for activities?
So the intention of the pop-up is so people can print it if they want to and then there's the link underneath. I will tell you that part of the website design, we're not going to be able to get to it right away to be ADA compliant within a couple of years, it's going to have to be audio. Anyways, so we're going there. For now, we have the images and people policy. They have, you know, if they have questions.
Oh, I.
Is that what you were asking?
I just figured, so when you click the hot link, it gives you the pop-up and you can obviously, and I am not tech savvy, so bear with me. I don't know if our website has the capability. But when, when the words entered in, right in the pop-up, like Lego club building a truck, there's usually a little description giving a little bit more information, like the age, the activity, something, something for the end user beyond the title. And if that's, I wonder if that's physically possible. Because I know when you guys push your, your like email announcements, there's a lot of stuff in there. So I wonder if we can just throw a couple of sentences in the website when it comes to classes or activities for somebody who might not know. What, what are the age groups or who is this best geared for or what does it mean a Lego truck? Because like, I'm not from around here and I've never seen a Lego before. You know what I mean? It's just a suggestion. I will, I will.
I, I guess I'm not exactly, I mean, I've not had any questions about what it meant, but.
Well, no, okay.
You could look at other libraries.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so let me use a better example. What you guys don't have, so this is an easy neutral example. Seven PM Miriam Room Garlic Butter or Making Garlic Butter. And then you click on it and it will say seven PM Miriam Room Making Garlic Butter. We will share a recipe and mix up our, you know, garlic and butter and show you how I make butter sticks. And that is what lives in the pop-up so that somebody looking for a little bit more information who's looking at the calendar knows what that is, right? When they click it, boom, and then they can, and then it can go away. So something like that, something, not that you guys are making garlic butter, but it's something to make it easy for the end user about what the activity in question is, who it's geared for. That's also a place where it might say thirteen plus, you know.
So I think that I usually do put a lot of information in those.
Okay, all right. At five PM, looking at the old version. I'll just double check. It was, it's a suggestion?
Because I, I do try to put as much as I can or if there's an author, I'll put, you know, some information, sometimes a link to their bio or things like that. So I think that I do. It's only a certain amount of space.
Yeah.
And I know that I've had feedback from saying people don't want to hunt for the date and time. They want that nice and big where they can find it and that makes sense. So it's always limited space that I'm looking at.
Okay.
But I'll keep that in mind.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so just quickly, I just wanted to, we did the Daisy Girl, Daisy Girl Scout badge program. They were so excited because it got to be in the expansion room where nobody else had been able to go in there. And we actually collected a lot of materials. Their, their badge was about bugs and shapes in nature. So we blew up some big pictures of insects and had them look for shapes in there and then we collected a lot of materials like leaves and twigs and flower petals. Auburn florists, I called them up and I said, do you have just some scrap petals and things that we could have? And they were very generous. We went over and got them. So they, they made these really cool bugs on these, on these wooden shapes that they could hang up. And that, we read a couple of stories and did some literacy, literacy sheets as well. So, so that was, you know, successful. They got their badges. Just quickly, tomato plant giveaway started today. About half of them are, are taken. If you want one, you can register and we'll give you one when you go in. Our summer reading program, Children of the World, where that process is in, in place. Kickoff is anticipated for Saturday, age of like twelve and it goes to August sixteenth, October sixteenth. Summer camp is also being developed. I think I talked about that before. Our toddler program and breakout sessions, we offer these twice a week. It's actually four programs because both breakout sessions are for the older siblings. And that becomes pretty, you know, a lot of work for the two, but they're always full, so it's a good thing to do. Library programs, our library things, I already talked about that. Maybe just to give you an idea of some of the programs coming up, Ted Reinsten has a new book, Travels to the Heart and Soul of New England. So I've already contacted him and told him we got it probably in the fall. Self-making for children, self-making for adults, animal adventures, rescue zoo, butterfly kits, live butterfly program, Kite, Hands Our Nature. It's various programs. Professor Bugman, he's doing a program outside. Planting flowers, earthworms, sand art, scavenger hunts for nature, dinosaur fossil hunts, kinetic sandcastles, astronomy, outside nature walks and so forth. So there's a lot in the queue and there'll be more that are busy in the summer. Teen advisory group. So I'm hoping the teens will, number one, help create their own summer reading programs, see what it is that they want to do. I don't want to offer them something and say, here, here's what we think you would like. We definitely want to have them, so hopefully that will work out. We have a couple of children's books in the, children's book hubs in the queue that I've been approached by parents and their children. So now that we have the space in there, the dividers work really nicely, so I think we can probably make that happen. This is one of our new initiatives that we're doing this year. We've done a lot of things at Auburn Youth and Family Services before, but this year we're doing a collaborative summer-long gardening program. So it's going to be for ages about seven to twelve. It will be all summer long, so they're going to get a gardening kit. They have to commit to, you know, planting and, you know, coming to the, to the programs. We'll have four to six programs here in the library, having to do with different things, earthworms, water conservation, how things grow, all those kinds of things. And then there are raised bed gardens over at Auburn Youth and Family Services. So they're actually going to go over there and lead the gardens and plant things and hopefully work with the teens as well. She's kind of an engagement there. They'll also learn about community service because they have a food bank there and that's where the food's going to go. So Sally and I are working together on that and I think that would be really, really fun and exciting. So hopefully they'll be able to come to most of them. They won't have nobody there to control. Also another gathering. Just, I, just a quick thing about our museum passes because I, I think that when you see a number, it looks like one thing. But our museum passes are extremely busy in the summer, up to fifteen or twenty a day. And all these passes are different. We have forty-seven. Some are seasonal, some cost different according to the time of year. Sometimes they admit one person, sometimes, you know, buy one, get one free, sometimes two people. Some of them have coded entries. Sometimes it's two entries per pass or full entry. Sometimes it's just a little bit off. Sometimes it's under three free, different amount for senior citizens. Some have to be library stamped. Some are one per household. And some have to be returned, some don't have to be returned, some are date-specific, some are date-specific. Sometimes we only have one pass to someplace. Sometimes we have four or five or seven. Sometimes they have to code and call ahead now to use the pass, which I think people find that very irritating when they're employing them. Because they have to get the pass and an entry time at the place they want to visit at the same time. Sometimes that's kind of annoying. So anyways, overall, we have really any problems at all with them being returned.
Oops, sorry.
So I will skip the rest, I guess, because, you know, there's other things on the agenda.
Question about museum passes. Is it a different process to book the passes depending on the pass?
The, the process for booking them is they can call us on the phone or they can stop in. So we immediately will get the pass. We have forms that are specific, write out the information. So we take care of all that. They just tell us what, what they want and when they want to visit. They can pick up the pass the day before or the day of the visit, unless it's a weekend and we accommodate that.
So question, because I noticed you had one to the Sandwich Glass Floyd Museum, which is all the way on the Cape.
Yes.
I assume that's not one they have to pick up the day before because it's all the way up the Cape.
I've made, I've made exceptions for that. In addition to that's right near, I think it's Heritage. So that's a partner pass. So if you wanted to go out there, you actually could borrow both of them.
Okay. Nice. I was just thinking of the logistics. I think it's great that we have.
It's a great place to go if you have a going. It's really nice. So, so we just hope that we have partner pass options if they're in our way.
Okay.
So the next item is questions for the library director. Anything about the report or any specific questions?
No, I would, I do have a question about the library hours. Do you expect to move more nights to eight o'clock?
We continue to track attendance. It really has not changed since the last time. It's point zero six people for that last hour. So we are open until eight on Thursday and sometimes there's a few people here. Certainly in the winter, there's really, you know, nobody. We can certainly take another look when we have, you know, more staff because that means we need administrators and we build them at all times too. So I wouldn't rule it out, but right now our, our traffic does not, does not support our adding.
Do you guys get a lot of traffic at nine AM or nine thirty AM?
Most of our traffic is kind of eleven to two and then later on in the afternoon, especially when the school is in, we get really busy at the end of the day with a lot of children coming in. And then summer's completely different. And don't forget, we're open on Saturdays and all summer. A lot of libraries aren't, are open. And you don't even, you don't even have to be for NBLC. They sort of don't count to ours requirement in the summer. But we don't.
So currently it's three hours on Saturday. Does that expand? Do you anticipate that expanding in the summer?
No, no.
Intended one?
It seems to be fine. Yep, it seems to be fine because we can fit in a program, the friends can fit in their book sales and it works fine.
Okay.
My concern with the Saturday hours is, is it tends to exclude kids who participate in a sport or activity. Because that's prime time of memory serves for kids in sports or activities. I look at people with kids because minus twenty-four and he's doing his own thing. So, so that's always been my concern with regard to Saturday hours. Is are we cutting out a chunk of the population that would otherwise come? Because I noticed the, the hour chunk is just a little bit.
It's very thin.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's feedback that we've gotten as well.
Yeah.
That, that's very, that people would like to have a longer library hours on Saturday. That's some consistent feedback. So I'm hoping that you could consider that moving forward as you mentioned with more staffing.
Considering it, maybe at the next budget time, just see what are we going to add in the evening or is it make Saturday? You know, doing both would probably be problematic, but I'm concerned.
I'm very concerned about not being open except for one evening a week. You can't really have any kind of programs.
For adults.
For adults. It just makes that impossible. Nobody could rent out this room because the library is open one night a week. And it seems that we ought to be encouraging the use of this room. We ought to be encouraging the adult programming. And unless we're willing to make some changes, and I don't know whether we can make a policy on that or not, I suppose we'll have to check with Ed. Where we can have some more hours, just not one night a week that's open till eight.
Yeah, no, that, that was, I, we did get some feedback from people saying that it's, that they would come after dinner, but they don't come after dinner. It's not open till eight and like other area libraries. And that's why I asked if the traffic in the morning justified the morning hours. Because of course you don't want to be here like twenty-four hours in the state, you know. But I guess finding what the community wants for when the community will come, like does the foot traffic that happens on a Saturday, is it robust enough to justify cutting out any kid involved in an activity or, you know, do those, would we lose those kids anyway by, by booking? Other libraries commensurate our hours. Like is everybody missing those kids on Saturdays? Maybe. But then do they, are they the strappers who come in after dinner?
I know Webster closes their library on one o'clock on Wednesday and they have long library hours on Saturday. So would that be something that could be considered if it meant, you know, shortening it at one specific weeknight and to expand on a Saturday?
Or closing her credit.
I think for our community, it would not be well received. I had done, I'll send it to you if you like, it was three years ago, an extensive assessment of library hours and who was open when. And we came out really strong compared to a lot of them because if they, if they, if they were open on Saturday, they closed on Monday. Or they closed half a day on the Wednesday or they closed on a Friday or something. So we were, we've been, and we've been consistent. Our community likes our hours to be consistent. They don't really want to, oh, this is the day I can't come in the afternoon. So I, I, I'm not sure that would be well received in our community.
Okay.
But it's all into consideration. I, you know, you have to consider, I don't want to make rules that I'm not going to be here for. I have to make sure that we're, you know, we're going to taking the next director, you know, into consideration and, and not, you know, set up for things that might be difficult to implement.
That's where a survey could be really effective though, like because again, things change. You know, there's times when there is more of a demand in a community and then there's times when that might change. So I think, I think we had talked years ago when I first started about like, you know, quarterly surveys out to the community to find out how we're doing. You know, is that, is that something that we could do to kind of take a look at the library hours?
All right, so go ahead.
No, no, can, can Jean, just, I just want to give her a chance. Go ahead.
So one of the things that I was considering on the website is a small area for like ongoing surveys, not for a long time. Just maybe here's a survey from the board trustees, here's a survey from the library, just a week at a time, just some quick sort of snapshot surveys. So I think that you have to be careful too though, because you might be hearing from a lot of people who are not Auburn residents. And, you know, we're here to support the Auburn residents. If we're going to add hours, that's, that is a budget consideration. It's a staffing consideration. There's, there's a lot to consider. So we could take a look at that. I also know that a lot of times will people, obviously we all do it, oh yeah, I, I want to do that. I want that. And then of course things come up. I know when I was academ, in academia, the students, I see you're laughing. The students, they just, they wanted to come on Sundays and they wanted to come in the evenings and so we would open and nobody came. So they, they wanted to, they intended to. So and I think that happens a lot, especially if you've got kids, you're always running here with another one. So I don't know that it would be effective, but we can take a look at. But we can take a look at.
Well, we were, we were open four nights a week, uh, for years. And actually until eight thirty or nine o'clock and then we changed that to eight o'clock. But, uh, this business of being open only one hour, one, um, evening a week does not make any sense. It's, you know, you just can't do the programming that we've talked about. And you can't have this room accessible to anybody because, uh, you, they can't use this room if the library's not open.
I, I would just add, you know, and I didn't even think about the adult programming, but it's true. Adults will come in the evening, so you wanna have that. You know, I noticed area libraries tend to have favorite hours that are ten to eight. But my concern with the hours to keep is that was blocking out working parents. Like, if you're a working parent and you're commuting, you're only getting here, let's say around six PM, you're having dinner. So you're not gonna get to the library in time. So if you shoot for the weekend, that's really endangering your kid not having activities. If your kid has activities, then you're just completely knocked out. And that's something that I imagine we would wanna avoid. At the same time, obviously there are certain considerations. But I wonder if it would be, if it would be easier to, to have short hours on one weekday, like a Friday, you know. I, I don't know how many people party at the library on Friday night.
It's so busy.
Are, are they?
Yeah, we would have people upset if we were.
Why on Mondays?
Kind of like.
No, that's fair, that's fair.
We, we see the patterns from our communities when after school and then they're all going home. We used to try pajama time. Nope, they all wanna go home. And so, you know, we kind of look at those patterns to see if this is gonna be a great idea. And then people just, especially working parents, I mean, I just need to go home by then and they're probably not gonna come back out.
Yeah.
And, and we can't overpopulate and think that we're gonna fill a lot of adult programs. We're only a small community, so we can't really have so many that we're kind of like, you know, offering so many, thinking they're gonna come if we have them, because then your numbers will go down.
Yeah, no, 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 no. I mean, of course, we would just wanna make the, the program times a time that an adult, that a working adult can access. But also library times, like again, I mean, as an adult, you have flexibility unless you have a commute. But as a parent, you have less flexibility because you're working around your kids' activities. Activities tend to happen on Saturdays if the kid is in dance or in sports or in anything like that. But some competitions, games and so on happen. But those kids might still wanna go to the library, those parents might still wanna take their kids to the library. And so that's what we're talking about is, you know, how, how do we create hours that are accessible to everybody? And not just people with a lot of time on their hands in the earlier part of the day.
All good points. Any other questions for the library director before we move into number seven?
I do, I have questions. Children's zoom expansion and also about the library report. When the library report, program attendance in the Auburn Public Library, so one, I have a question. Total programs held at Auburn Public Library listed as two fifty-seven for the year twenty twenty-three. But then in a different section, it's the kids' programs that are at two fifty-seven and nine adult programs. Is that an overlap or is that an undercount?
I'm not sure where you're looking.
What page you on?
Newsletter or?
What page you on?
The, the annual reports, the town reports.
Page one.
So.
Annual report.
Yeah, annual report, page one. You have number of in-house presented funded programs to children is two fifty-seven and number of adult programs is twenty-nine. If you flip all the way over to the unnumbered page, I tried. The page opposite of the page with all the pictures, right? Uh, it says programs held at Auburn Public Library during twenty twenty-three caps it off and had two, at two fifty-seven. And so what I'm asking for is, is that inclusive of the adult programs that are listed at twenty-nine, cause they're all ages? Or is that just an undercount, cause the adult programs got dropped off? Sorry, if there were numbers, I would make it easy.
Should I can't show the numbers, cause it's drawn, I guess I. Can you hold up the page again?
Okay, so the.
Yep, yep.
Immediately proceeding it.
Okay.
Eight, page eight.
Page eight. Okay.
So what probably happened here, some of my reporting is this calendar year and some of it's calendar year. And my guess is I undercounted.
Okay.
For the twenty-nine and probably counted only six months. I wouldn't be ready either. I don't know, I'll take a look at it. Oh, no, you know what? That's attendance. You're looking at attendance?
No, I'm looking at programs held at Auburn Public Library during twenty twenty-three, uh, colon, two five seven. That's about midway down the page.
Yep.
Yep, okay. So it's actually twenty-nine more.
Okay. And then second question, same page, children serve seven thousand six hundred thirty-seven. Are those unduplicated kids? Like, like, like for example, you have ten kids that go to five programs. Are we counting them as ten kids or fifty kids?
Each child who attends program is counted once.
Okay, so when, if they attend ten programs, they're still counted once?
No, they counted per program.
So.
So if a child goes to ten programs, they're counted once for each program. Might be the same child, but it's still a different attendance at a different program.
Okay, and same for adults, they're, they're.
Yeah, and that's in, and that's consistent with the way the state wants. As well.
And then, hold on, I wanna make sure I have all my questions on the report. Oh, 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 there we go, overdrive, cause I'm gonna have a question for you on the schedule of bills payable too. But you have one thousand, sorry, on page two, page two, one thousand nine hundred eighty-eight. Number of e-magazines circulations through overdrive. Is that just at the Auburn Public Library? Is that like, so, so just Auburn residents?
Yes.
Okay, or is that, so one thousand nine hundred eighty-eight number of magazines taken out? Or number of magazines we have purchased that exist in our system?
These are circulations, that means that they were borrowed.
Okay, okay. I got that. I'm gonna loop back to that, but I'm gonna, under the bill schedule, but I am gonna pop over to the children's zoom expansion for this for a second. You sent out a second one saying, Gordon at DPW, working on bookcases for the technology walls, which require specific supports. So have the walls, have they been engineered to support the weight of books and the proposed number of books? And everything else that's happened, the engineering component in there?
Time engineers checked out.
Okay, all right, cause I'm just, I have been looking at like spacing and ADA compliance and all of that stuff. Cause you know, we, we, we wanna feel good when we wander around. I got them. You got any questions on the schedule of bills?
I had one on the, uh, May fourteenth bill schedule. I just wondered who Christine Lewis was, what, that person did, Kristen Lewis. May fourteenth, uh, that would be the second page of May fourteenth, I believe. It's the third page, second page of this report, May fourteenth.
And is there, what's the name again, Matt?
Kristen Lewis, it's on page, it would be page four, but it's labeled page two on the bottom, just because of the.
She was the carpet consultant for the expansion.
Okay.
Carpet consultant?
Yes.
What, what do they, what, can you tell me what a carpet consultant does?
Well, it's a long rectangular space and there is certain materials, it was carpet over carpet. I wanted to make sure we got something that was durable and that has the title, so we could peel off if they did got damaged. And also didn't want anything just flat and needed a little bit of character to it. And so she brought some samples and made some recommendations. And then I, I had sent those to the board and I also sent them up here to the public and overwhelmingly they chose the blue. So that's what she gave some ideas, because I didn't wanna make that decision without somebody sort of like, you know, reading some professionally. So that's what she is.
I'm holding my breath a little bit because I'm thinking of all the other decisions that went into that construction. That's, there would have been other nice places to have had consultants. DH Paste Company, just about four downs. Eighteen twenty-one.
That's, uh, front door maintenance.
Okay. And then the Conway Technology.
That's our printed, printing overage.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Printing overage, like copier overage, we pay a certain amount and anything over than that.
Okay. Does that typically happen every month? I haven't seen that before.
I believe we get, if you don't think it's a monthly, excuse me for a minute, I'll check this day. Is that a quarterly?
That's quarterly.
Okay. You'd have to pay more to avoid that expense, so probably, is that right?
Well, we have to pay a certain amount by contract and anything over that, we have to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have questions. Is it done? Overdrive, what are we getting for the overdrive spend?
Are you, what are you referencing?
Uh, so either May, where overdrive is one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. Or that was being May fourteenth and then overdrive appears again. I know that's technology. I'm just curious what that gets us.
That's our e-content.
Huh?
That's our e-content.
Okay, so, and then overdrive in, on April thirtieth, two thousand one hundred five dollars.
Right, same thing.
Okay, so, so what e-content does it get us?
So you, are you talking about the variety of texts that there, that we're able to get through the e-content?
Yeah, 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 I, I'm.
Like in other words, fiction and non-fictions that we were asking?
Yeah, what else in there for two thousand a month?
Okay.
Those, those are ebooks.
Okay.
Access them electronically, those are, that's what we pay for, for the access.
Do you pay for access or per book and then?
There are different ways to do it. We actually pay by book. We don't bundle or anything like that, because sometimes you get things. So we actually track to see what has a lot, we kinda coordinate what, what print has a lot of demand and then we'll make sure we get one in ebook. And once in a while we get two, mostly just one.
Okay.
So we kind of like make sure, cause some people like the ebook and some people.
So two thousand a month on e-magazines and ebooks. And then on page one, central programs, ink, gondra, books, that's kids' books, right?
Correct.
For two thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars. Sorry, learning this, so I can keep track. Edward Lucky Dara Animal Adventure, that's a class.
That's a museum class.
Oh, cool. You have a lot. I'm not, uh, on the ball, on all of them. Blackstone Publishing, books?
Those are books on CD.
And Ingram Library Services.
Those are books.
Adult books, kids' books, all books?
Both, more adults than kids, because we have other vendors, kids' book, book also.
And a porn group.
It's also children's books.
What about Rachel, learning materials?
Those are, depending what that is, we get some of our seating for children there. They have really good quality, um, learning materials and seating, puzzles and things like that.
Going through, sorry, don't need to bore y'all. More Blackstone Publishing, that's books. Wait, wait, I forget, did you tell me that was adult books or kids' books?
That's adults.
Okay, so Blackstone is adults. At least mostly I can identify the museum passes. Okay, is Blackstone the only publisher with adult books? So that I don't have to ask your line by line?
No, Ingram.
Ingram, okay, Ingram's. Okay, I think that's all I have for now.
How long does the ebook last?
I'm gonna defer to Molly, cause she's my ebook expert.
Different publishers have different lengths, um, but usually we, the ones that we buy are for a year.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions?
Well, a general question, it's not bill specific, can we? Because I have not been here, uh, and I haven't been in Auburn for the past eight years. Have we seen a general shift of hard copy materials, uh, in favor of e-materials? Not in terms of people taking them out, in terms of, uh, library stock.
For, for us?
For, yeah, for.
We make sure, we're kind of following the patterns and then we order more e-content. We look at it all the time, um, to see what the usage are, and we're buying it, but are people borrowing it? And yes, they are. So we're seeing kind of what most libraries are seeing, uh, people still want books and more and more people are doing both. Personally, I still just like books and some people have shifted completely ebooks. I think it's about what you'd expect it to be, um, but we, we just, so we manage our resources to make sure that we're, you know, accommodating both. So I know the reason you don't need as many on your shelf, because people, a lot of people do want the ebooks. They, you know, available by the way, it's good to take notification, so, so we track it pretty carefully. And make sure that we're only purchasing titles that we're pretty sure are, are gonna be borrowed.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Actually, I do have a question. Um, the e-content, does that include also things like audiobooks? I know you said you have books on CD, which is great, cause my kids sleep to those. But also, you know, audiobooks, which I know can be complicated and you get run into Audible, of the company that shall not be named here.
That's why we have Molly and Jerry.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, and like, I know Libby is, is one of the ones that people use. So I wasn't sure if, if we've seen an uptick in people asking about those, um, in general, I mean.
I mean, people who read them know how to go on and get them and so it's usually, they'll come in, that's one of those, they need ten minutes with somebody right then. Because the password didn't work or something like that. And that's, that's when we, it's real-time assistance. And then pretty much they're good to go. If they run into a problem, they can call. Usually they'll come in and if, um, we'll make sure one of our tech specialists goes over and spends a little time with them. And ninety percent of the time they're able to, you know, get them.
We're good? All right, number seven, I wanna explain. We've talked, we've gotten a lot done this year. We've talked in the past about organizing our meetings so that we're prioritizing things and then having a timeline that we're, we're achieving our goals as a board. But we also have played around with the schedule in the past. So when I, I started on the board in two nineteen and then in two twenty-one, one of the members suggested that we, you know, lessen the amount of meetings. So the first piece I wanna ask is, what are the things that the boards, board really wants to, generally things that we wanna prioritize? And then to agree upon, currently what we are doing is, we are meeting from the first Wednesday of September through November, breaking December and January. And then we are going February to our, you know, June first meeting. This is our June first meeting, for lack of a better way, because the election came about and we wanted to fit this in. So I wanna hear from board members, what would you like prioritize? Thinking in terms of, we will break into subgroups to get things done and because we're, we're moving, right? So what do we want to accomplish and then how, how, what type of schedule would we like to, you know, um, plan for, for this year? Go ahead.
For me, the, the schedule that we have is just fine.
Okay.
I, I know that we're doing this meeting in July, but, you know, I, I really do think we've got some. I, I think all that work that was done by the subcommittee is something we really should be.
Yep.
Working on and then, and then, so that's my feeling about schedule. We can always add a meeting, uh, somebody was on the board that thought you couldn't add meetings without a big deal. But you could, we could add a meeting anytime we want to, that doesn't really matter. So if we needed to do something, we always could. But, so my feeling is the schedule's fine the way it is.
Okay. Lindsay?
I'm fine with number of meetings. I, you know, we tend to go roughly two hours.
Yeah, yeah.
And last time we went two and a half. And so I, you know, the meetings are just, have been long. And I don't know if some of that is just like getting a little more organized around agenda, which by the way, I really like this new format. It's much easier to read and navigate. But, you know, if I had my druthers, if we could start a half hour earlier, like at six?
Which we used to. And I'm okay with it, if the board is okay with it. We switched, we had one member that couldn't make it until six thirty about three years ago. So, so does, how does the, how does the board feel about a si- it'd be still, uh, first Wednesday of every month at six eight, six PM, not AM, six PM? And we generally haven't gone, we've gone recently long, cause I think we're trying to get things done.
Sure, we're getting feedback under us, I get it, yeah.
And we're also trying to, we're trying to re, reformulate how we're communicating and making sure that we're, you know, we're, we're giving time to hear what's happening at the library. But also asking some really important questions. So, so how does the board? So, so how does the board feel about, start time would be six o'clock, and my preference too, Lindsay, would be under an hour and a half.
Oh, yeah, I get it, we got to cover our business. I'm not, this is not a complete, I'm not even that committed to six, I just, for me personally, this pushes something right up against bedtime with a very grown toddler, so, a little earlier would be really nice.
What are you thinking?
Six is fine.
Six?
I actually also appreciate the, the blocks of time at the holidays, and in the summer, because that's the only time I can travel home to see family.
Right.
Because I live a thousand miles, I'm a thousand miles away, so.
That's true, I can work for you.
That'll be fine, because my kids are in theater, so I won't be going anywhere till August.
How do you feel about it, Jean?
I would love to start at six o'clock, because I'm generally here at seven.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
It's a long day.
Matt?
I'm fine.
Okay, so, and we're, we're keeping the schedule, adding July. So, in other words, we're just adding a July meeting?
Yeah, I, I, you know, as soon as we can after the election.
Okay.
Which is what we did this year.
Yep, yep. No, but what July, though? You referenced July, after the Fourth of July?
Yeah, this year.
This year.
Yeah.
But no, we're not committing to that moving forward, we just want...
I probably not want to do that again.
Okay.
I think we need to do that.
So, we will, we'll stick to the current schedule, we're adding a July just this year, in terms of getting things done, really delving into what the subcommittee is working on, so that we can get an update. Any other priorities for the year?
I have one other thing that I hope we can at least take a look at for the July ninth meeting, is to take a look at these policies on the Merriam-Room, policies on public comments for our meetings.
Yep.
And then to make some decision about a recommendation for hours, if we're going to have that policy.
Okay.
But we can, you know, work on, I, I, I'd like to spend most of the time, I hope, on that tactics thing.
Right.
And just, there's, I, I read the materials that were prepared for that meeting, and I, I think there's a lot of very interesting and helpful and useful, I think it's going to be useful for the next strategic plan.
I just want to add one, with selfish, selfish thing that I, I know that Nan Johnson finished second as the third, three-year term, but she had previously done a lot with beautification of the outdoors of the library. So, I, I'd like to add that on, beautification, like whatever that means, whether it's the inside of the library, getting artwork up, but also, also maybe planting outside, that type of thing.
Could we just create a subcommittee to, in the month of June, do the art? Or be like, why, why wait, right? This month break?
Okay.
Maybe we designate it.
I like it.
I'm so enthusiastic about that, yeah, I think it's a great idea, right? Why, why would we wait?
Reserve until you see what's in there.
I like it. So, what do you think, who wants to do a subcommittee with Lindsay on the art?
I'll do it.
I'd, I'd be interested to.
I'd like to be on the subcommittee, I just, I think that that...
You want to get us?
Amazing, okay.
Okay.
Lindsay, when you suggest...
Of ugly art, they're mostly...
You suggest it, you've got it.
So, it's popular, so happy you should not be on that.
So, so right now...
I was going to say, I'll take a pass, because I ain't got my fingers in other places.
Erica, I'm in.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a fan, I'm a fan.
So, let me just add a little monkey wrench here.
Yep.
Let me know when you want to come, I have to make sure the room, I have a place to put them, for you to look at them, because I have to go back in there, because there's no place, I, there's no place to put them, and I, it's going to be really hard to get them out where they are, so give me enough notice to be able to do that, and make sure that there's a place to put those.
All right. So, so that, so the things that I heard about was, we're getting, we're going to get, really find out where the subcommittee is at, and what they're advising us to do in terms of how we're evaluating, we took all the tactics, I don't think I like that word, but, so that, that policies on the Merriam-Room, policies on public comment, hours of operation, beautification. The last question I was going to ask the board, unless anybody has anything else. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so Lindsay had brought up a good point when, when we met over coffee, saying we don't do anything to onboard new members.
Okay.
So that it would be good to have an onboarding...
I agree.
Handbook, onboarding handbook, both ones, this is your party.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, Karen and I had met for coffee just to, just to catch up on just general life things, and, and, you know, started noodling on things around, around the board, and I said, I really am like missing, I want a handbook, I want my, you know, this is my reference, this is what we do, this is our objectives, here's a copy of the strategic plan, right? And it, it doesn't necessarily have to be a five-hundred-page binder, but there's great resources that I've seen on the MBLC website, that actually provide guidance on how to craft your own town's handbook. You reference their materials as they apply, you state in your handbook what's different from the state, you know, charter, and then you sort of fill in with, you know, policies or at least links to a, a sort of a reference guide for all of us, just to help, because I, even now, I feel like I've learned so much, but it's, it, it wasn't super obvious how to onboard to this group.
Okay.
And that made it really hard to participate at first, you didn't know, I didn't know what to say, or what to do, or what, what we were doing, so I, I think maybe we could talk about a roadmap for how to deliver something like that as a group?
I like it.
I just think that would be so useful, and then if we do have people coming on, which now we're going to need to fill a seat, that person would be a great beneficiary at first, guinea pig of a, of a handbook, so.
And it gives us the opportunity to memorialize certain things, like you said, our role was unclear for some time, or what our authority was, so this lets us like get it down for all future board members, so that it's very clear what powers we have, what powers we don't have, and how to go about doing things.
Okay.
So, there's them. My other thing is, we should tweak the collections policy, just to kind of strengthen some of our focus on like periodicals, adult programming, stuff like that. Didn't think of it first time around, but the collections policy is a living document that allows us to update, so I want to make sure that we update it accordingly. And of course, as an aside, the report that I did, I'm going to be sending it out to the select board and finance as well, because I think at this point, we have the wind at our backs. We see that there is, again, we see, we are all on board, we are all unanimous, wanting to fill it, and wanting to, to make this the best library we can make it for everybody in the community, not just the kids, but the adults, not just e-readers, but old-fashioned, old-school paper people like me, so, you know, always me, I'm super old-school. So, I want to, I, I want to definitely make that a focus in the coming year, not just with Jean's goals, but any additional way we can help, any additional things we spot, whether we're looking at ours, or whether we are collecting feedback from the community on which periodicals they want to see, or best practices. I think, you know, last year we spent time figuring out what are our powers, this year we can use our powers for good, for the good of the community.
Well said, well said. Question for the board, I had to, I had to reach out to Town Hall, because I knew that you had, you had been successful in both the one-year and the three-year categories. If you were to choose not to take the three-year seat, Nan Johnson, who was a previous member of our board, would have served the three-year. So, my question today, I went down to Town Hall to get sworn in, can I finish my sentence?
Yeah, please, I'm just putting myself on the queue.
I'm just a huge, I'm a huge Nan Johnson fan, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't deny it, but my question to the assistant town, to the town clerk, was if we were to appoint Nan, how would we do it? If we, I want to hear from, if, if the board is interested, there's two, there's two avenues. One would be, I write a letter to the select board recommending that we appoint Nan Johnson for the one-year seat, and they would either approve that, or they would ask us to do a, a joint committee, which we've done, you were a part of a joint team that, that, that we were all unanimous about you, and Steve did the same thing. So, I wanted to see if the board would be interested in me recommending Nan Johnson for the one-year, and then they would tell us, they'll tell us whether it's going to be a joint meeting, or whether they'll just approve that. So, that's my question tonight, in terms of just, because we do need to fill that vacancy. And typically, what we would do, if we didn't have this option, we would, if somebody expressed interest, then we would, we, I would write a letter to the town, the town manager, and say that we have this vacant position, then they'd advertise it, and that person would apply.
I was going to, I was just going to add in there that, that actually, if you win both slots, the second runner-up doesn't get the slot you didn't choose.
Right, of course.
Because...
Yeah, 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 no, no. Well, it's an election.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the, because the, the community didn't vote for that person.
You don't have any choice about it.
No, no.
I'm with, I'm with you, Mary, a hundred percent, on, on requesting that perhaps, well, first of all, are members ready to, to ask for her to be appointed?
Yeah, that was my question.
If we are, then it'd be good for you to...
Yeah, we just write it.
See if there's a way to, to shorten the process.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to ask, because I don't know, it's a real question. I don't know what the process is, like, do we just get to pick Nan, or do we have to open up that there is a position, and allow anyone who wants to apply, and then we do the, the thing like we did with Lindsay and that other lovely woman, where we ask the questions, and then we, with the select board, vote? I don't know if we get to pick, like...
You know, I'm not sure, we, the, the unique situation is here that she was a write-in candidate.
Right.
And I, I think it's unique, and I, I think it's up to the board. So, first of all, if we vote that we would like to do that, then you have authority to be able to...
Correct.
To ask the board of selectmen if, if we want to go through the process, or if we can appoint her.
Correct.
So, I'd make a motion that if it's possible to appoint Nan through, with the board of selectmen, that, that's who I would like to do.
Okay, do I have a second?
For the vacancy.
Second.
Okay. Hold on, sorry, I'm just thinking initials here. Okay, I'm going to do a roll call. So, Matt is a yes, Vera?
Yes.
Erica's a yes, Lindsay?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, very good. So, what I will do is, I will, I will move it forward, saying that the board is moving forward, Nan, but we want their, the recommendation of the select board, how they'd like to, 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 whether they want to, whether they approve that recommendation, or whether we'd need to open it up, to go back to your point, and if, if they approve our recommendation that's been voted upon unanimously, whether we would go right to allowing the select board to just have her onboard, just to steal your expression, or whether we'd need to have a joint meeting, which we, only for the last two candidates, we had joint meetings, that was something they did past practice.
Me too. When my first time on the board was, I went through a joint meeting.
Oh, you did, that's right, you did.